I'd like to welcome all of you to joining us for tonight's board meeting. The first item that we'd like to take care of is our pledge of allegiance. Please join us. Thank you. Now I'm going to ask Director Perkins to read the land acknowledgement.
Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan peoples and the Kowals tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community.
Thank you very much. I do have a statement regarding the recent COVID, the current COVID guidelines from Governor Inslee's office in response to the outbreak and the Open Public Meetings Act. It allows in-person meetings to occur but are limited to 25% capacity in the meeting room. Those who cannot attend in person this evening are joining us via Zoom webinar. And we welcome everyone, no matter what format they're visiting us. I'm going to ask for a roll call to confirm the attendees. Director Ginny Gronwell.
Here.
Director Rob Perkins.
Here.
Director Julie Bookena.
Here.
Director Rachel Rogers.
Here.
Superintendent Mike Marino.
Here.
And Administrative Assistant Laurie Sroll. Thank you for being here. Okay, our next order of business is to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting. Do I have a motion for approval of the meeting?
I move to approve or to adopt tonight's agenda as presented. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up is the board's consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval of the board's consent agenda?
Move the approval of the board's consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then consent agenda?
I move to approve the superintendent consent agenda as presented. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now we have the superintendent's report. Mr. Marino.
Thank you. Thank you, Victoria. I've got a few, just a few different things I'll mention tonight. First off, since our last board meeting, we had our school startup and that went quite well. We're into the third week of school thus far. I think there isn't any question. Everyone was extremely excited to come back August 31st. I know each of you had an opportunity to stop by a school. I enjoyed having the opportunity to share some information about the district and then also we had the opportunity to highlight some of our, our schools. Particularly that day, I got an opportunity to highlight Legacy and Hollingsworth Academy and the Transitions Program, which was, which was great. So everybody's very excited about being back. I think our students are excited about being back. Our staff is excited about being back. We've got, we're into the third week of activities, events, you know, we're back again in McKenzie Stadium. We get to hear noise on weekends in McKenzie Stadium, which is, I know that that sometimes can be annoying to people who probably live around there, but I think there's a strong likelihood that the people that live in the neighborhood are quite happy to hear the cheering. Again, volleyball games, cross-country, golf, everything. So real excited about it and grateful that we have the opportunity to be back. I was on a Zoom today with Superintendent Reichdahl. It's a statewide Zoom that he has. There have been some questions and I think even some rumors at times about the thought that COVID cases are rising. We may have a situation where schools are closed. I think I've heard at least two or three rumors of that, probably more than that. Superintendent Reichdahl reiterated again today, there is not, very unlikely that we would see guidance from the state that would cause a statewide reduction, not reduction, but statewide stop of school as we saw in March of 2020. It would likely be, if there were cases at extreme levels, it's going to be, end up being a local decision. It's a local decision between the school district and the local Department of Health. And we work on a daily basis. I really want to highlight the work that Holly Long, our manager of nursing services, does on a daily basis along with the few staff that she has. She does not have a significant amount of staff. Working to support our buildings, working with the Clark County Department of Health, who themselves are understaffed in the work that they're doing. The case levels are at the highest that we've seen for 100,000 over 14, 14-day period in the county since March of 2020. So there isn't any question that the case levels has impacted what's happening in school. And I would say that the primary impact is just around the time and the effort that goes into the contact tracing at each site and originates through Holly with each of the buildings. I really can't enough say how much that we all appreciate what's going on in our buildings to make school safe for our students and keep school open on a daily basis for our students. It has been at times, I think, overwhelming for administrations. And so when I talk about it, it's the school nurses, it's the principals, it's the associate principals, it's the school secretaries that are working on the contact tracing and a lot of the efforts that go into that. So we, we're doing our best on a daily basis to continue to maintain the learning environment. We will continue to do that. Very excited about the fact that we have kids here, but there isn't any question that the current levels of, of cases in the community are, are they do impact what happens on a daily basis in terms of working with our students. The most recent week, we started to see a little bit of a decline in cases throughout the county on a daily basis. Hopefully we'll continue to see that decline in cases. I'm very encouraged that we've been able to continue to offer a program, offer all the sports programs to our kids. It's just a, it's a testament to everything that's going on in our buildings. I mentioned the new guidance. One of the other things that we're dealing with, HR is dealing with, the, we've talked, I can't remember when it was, but Governor Inslee put forward the vaccination mandate, which obviously has been received in all kinds of ways. And I I think I would be, it wouldn't be right to say that no matter what the governor puts out, there's a segment of people that really support what he's, what he's putting out. And there's a segment of the population that's really against what he's putting out. The amount of, of work level that has been added to the system to work within our system with our employees with respect to collecting vaccination proof, whether it's individuals wanting to work through religious, religious exemptions or the medical exemption that is provided. It's a significant amount of work. I really applaud the efforts that have gone on in the HR department to continually provide information to our staff to make sure that they have everything that they need to have in order to be able to move forward with providing the documentation around vaccination status or providing religious exemptions or providing medical exemptions. And each one that comes in, there's an accommodation request along with that. And we have to work with the individual with respect to that accommodation. So it's, it's a significant amount. I was on a call Monday with the local superintendents as we have been really for the last nine, 18 months or so. Kind of just talking through the various things that we're dealing with. And I, I think it's, it's a reality that there likely will be a certain percentage of staff members that won't provide the vaccination or provide a religious exemption and may not continue employment status with the district. When the, the conversation with the districts, many of the districts said they see that that number could be as high as 10% of their staff in the district. So you think about Evergreen, and I'm not saying it is or it isn't going to be at that number, but if it were to be 10% for Evergreen, that's probably 300 to 350 people. So the only reason I mention that is we're having a struggle even at the current situation to find, attract employees to come work with us. There are certain areas that were low, lower than we've typically been. We typically have a number of subs as bus drivers. Right now, we're struggling to find bus drivers. The office staff, including the mechanics, which there's about 20 of them, they've all got their CDLs, their commercial driver's license. So they're all having to step in occasionally and make that happen. So I just mentioned that as, as we get closer to the October 18th deadline, we'll have more information about our numbers, what they look like. And we absolutely will communicate at the earliest possible time with our, our parents and families about any impact that might be seen within our district. I will say that also with respect to the staffing, HR and various departments have worked together to set up a career fair, kind of a open door to allow the outside, the public to come in and look at the types of jobs that we have available. That's on September 22nd here at the district office. I think Lori had flyers attached out front on that. It's from 3:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon. I think we've gotten a lot of interest in that already, which is fantastic. So we're doing everything we can to make sure that we're staffed at the levels that we need to be staffed at to support our students the way we need to support our students and families. The other thing, I guess, the last thing I will mention is enrollment is obviously a significant thing for the district as it drives the revenue that we have to, to support the district. We had looked at the budget for 21, 22 as if you looked at 2021 and said, you know, we didn't have the pandemic and looked at our enrollment, if it had been a regular year carrying forward, we would have seen an enrollment decline. But not to the levels where we were in 2021. So if we built the budget for 21, 22, we built back in some of the students that had chosen not to attend in 2021 as a result of the pandemic. And some of that was homeschool, some of those kids going to private schools. There could have been a wide variety of people weren't here. What we're actually seeing this year is enrollment patterns similar to what we saw last year. So actually lower than budgeted, but even lower in some instances than the numbers that we had last year. So our elementary schools see, have a little bit of a decline even from last year. Our middle schools are down a little bit. Our high schools are roughly status quo. So what we had budgeted and what we had last year is about where we're at this year. And then we have seen an uptick in the Home Choice Academy and Legacy online programs of about 150 to 200 kids. So we do, we did retain some of our kids that maybe chose to move to the remote only option at Home Choice for K through 8 and then also Legacy High School for those in grades 9 through 12. So fortunately, we have ESER funds, as we've talked during the budget, to help us through this budget year. So as we looked at, you know, typically what we do in the fall is when the enrollment comes in at the schools, we kind of look and take a look at class sizes. Do we have high class sizes in there? Do we have low class sizes in areas? Do we add staff or do we move staff? How do we treat that? And when we had the conversations about that around staffing this year, one of the things that we had done as an exercise this fall as a leadership team was kind of look at kind of revisiting why we're here, which is for students, we're here to support students and using that lens to help us as we're making decisions, which of course we always have, but it's always good to kind of re, just kind of rethink what we're doing and what we're here for and then actually put into our decision-making process that we're paying attention to that. So what we've done with the staff, so what we've, I kind of view it as, is that we have an ex, we have a resource of teachers this year that have smaller class sizes, particularly the elementary school, maybe a little bit in middle school, high school, roughly the same. In elementary schools this year, rather than moving teachers around, also with the idea of stability and connection, trying to provide as much stability as we possibly can, the, the vision was that for the last 18 months, we've had kids that have lost access on a daily basis to their teacher through the classroom in person. And so for 18 months, we've kind of dealt with that. If we have an excess, if we call it that, it really isn't an excess, but our resource, we just have some smaller class sizes. Rather than trying to move people around, we believed it made the most sense for us to just leave our class sizes intact, have a little bit smaller class size so we could focus even deeper on what we're doing to support our students. And then in the fall, as a team, a teaching and learning team, really work around what are kind of the metrics that we can use to look at as the year goes on around what that has meant for our students in those smaller class sizes. How can we go back and measure growth in reading, growth in math, whatever the area may be. And we're working on that so that we can communicate that back out to the community. We have this resource of ESER funds this year and we're really focusing in on keeping our class sizes small. And as ESER looks at, they talk about learning loss. We've talked about learning acceleration, getting ourselves back to where we've lost a little bit of that time. And so really that's where our focus is. And I think we all feel good about that, shared that with the staff last week after we got our official enrollment. Now, our actual enrollment will be finalized in the next few days. One of the other things that we're working with is the state law around immunizations, not the COVID vaccine, but other immunizations. State law changed a few years ago requiring that every, every student have those immunization documents with the district before they'd be allowed to be in school. And we still have a number of staff. We've had a number of students that have struggled to have access to vaccinations, whether it's through COVID. Right now, we have kind of a, a shortage of vaccinations is the information that I've received from Holly and Matt Hill that works with Holly. So we're doing our best and I lobbied OSPI to, you know, if, if we have students that go out with the COVID quarantine in the first few days of the, of September, they were allowing us to count those students. So we were trying to push for them to allow us to do the same thing with the students that haven't got all the immunization information in. We were supposed to have that. Last year, they delayed it a year. This is the first year they haven't, they have not allowed us to do that. So we probably had, I don't know what the number is now, but it was around 400 students of ours that still had not. We hadn't received. We've got our staff reaching out, working closely with families to just try to, try to provide as much. And we want to be able to serve our students. We need to get them enrolled. We need to get them in to be able to do that. So I would say it's kind of a double-edged sword. I think everybody's real excited to have our kids back. There's no question about it. But I do think that it's a very challenging environment that all districts in the state of Washington are facing with respect to the protocols and just with respect to the level of, of the cases that we see in our community. So we're really hopeful to see those numbers drop. And I would reiterate again, as we say in our guidance, if families have students that aren't feeling well or if their staff that's not feeling well, we really need to try to keep those at home as much as we can to avoid a lot of the contact tracing and then let us work with everyone remotely and tell and remotely, I'd say, getting assignments to kids and working, supporting them. And then getting them healthy so we can get them back in school. You approved in your, I think in the superintendent consent agenda and MOU for EEA, which we're very grateful, thankful of the work that Janay and Carissa, Julie, Erin with Bill and Lisa, that we were able to kind of work through that and have something in place real early in case there's any need for us to react to something, if there's a classroom that might get quarantined or anything like that. So just really pleased that we were able to work together and make that happen and appreciate the board for passing that tonight. A lot going on. Excited to be here. Everybody's working really hard in our system and I really appreciate from the bus driver that picks our students up to the custodian that cleans up in the building, to the cook that serves, to our secretaries in our buildings, to our paras that work on a daily basis, to our teachers, our counselors, our nurses, our librarian. And I know I'll forget some of our administrators, associate principals, deans. Everybody's working really hard for the students in this system and I'm extremely appreciative of everyone.
Well, onto our next agenda. This is, I just need to give a gentle reminder that people need to have their masks completely on. Thank you very much. Julie, did you have a question?
I wanted to ask Mike a couple of questions. That's okay?
Yeah.
So have we just seen some isolated outbreaks? Nothing like where we've had like quarantine classroom or?
We've not had a classroom that's had to be quarantined yet, but we've, we have had members in a classroom that have had to be quarantined, not to the level that we had to shut the classroom down. I think that when you look at the data, you just see a lot of individual, one, two, in a building. We're not seeing transmission within buildings. We're seeing a lot of kids or staff members even coming. We've even seen staff members that fortunately over the weekend, they got sick and they didn't even bring any, they didn't expose anybody. So we haven't had the widespread, but I, I have to say it's, it's much more impactful this fall. Obviously, we have everyone in school as opposed to in the spring where we had half of our students on two days a week, but we have not seen a classroom have to be shut down yet. I think we've been close at least once, but we haven't had to do that.
And then my other question was on enrollment. So I know some of it shifted to Legacy and then Home Choice, but what do you have, like what the total number is, like?
Total number of students at Home Choice?
No, 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 like overall.
In the district?
Yeah.
I would say if you went to, and I don't have the exact number, but if you were in 1920, we probably were a little over 24,000 students at that time. I think right now, our number is probably in the upper 22s. So probably 1,500 students less than we were just even two years ago. And it's been kind of a little bit of a decline. So that's 800 maybe last year, another 600 this year, something like that. So 22,800, but all, as soon as we do the actual official count, then I'll
Yeah, I just wanted to ballpark. What about activities? Do you feel, do we feel like as many kids are participating so far this fall?
I'm not hearing any, any information that's sharing that there are concerns about kids turning out. I think that, I think we're getting a lot of kids turning out and I think that we're having great experiences with that.
That's great news.
Yeah, that is good. Now, I guess the, the one thing I would also say is the ESER funds that we have really likely are here this year and next year. And we cannot continue to staff a system at a level for 23,500 kids if you've got 22,800. So it's just something that we'll absolutely have to be looking at this year as we think about next year and then communicating and making sure that we're having the transparency around that to share where we're at. And I say that today because I don't want people to think that we can just continue to operate forever. ESER funds are federal funds. Now, you know, maybe they, they extend federal ESER funds further, but we have to think about that day that those funds aren't there and how do we address that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Mike?
Like curious to know how our transportation numbers are. I noticed there's a lot more parents picking up in our elementary schools mostly, but is that?
How many kids are on the buses?
Yeah, I know that we're having to thin out and we obviously don't have enough bus drivers for the amount that we need, but how is that affecting our numbers on transportation?
So
The actual bodies, not just the assignment.
All need to ask Yvonne that num, that like, are we seeing a decline in the number of, I mean, the number of routes that we have didn't change. One of the things that we, this is the first year we've been talking about doing this, but then school ended. Last year, we were going to do it. One is, is the transporting students to the dual language immersion program. So while we have seen some routes consolidated, we added routes back so to make sure that we were giving access to our students, particularly Spanish-speaking students to make sure that they could access the program. So I'll, I'll ask Yvonne about the numbers. I do know that they've consolidated some routes. They've got routes in place in case they were needed, needed to do double runs, go out, get kids, come back, drop them off, and go back out. I know that they're already looking at just looking at safe walking and, and those types of issues. Because we don't necessarily know what the numbers are going to look like October 1st, October 5th, as we get closer to the 18th. But I'll ask Yvonne about the actual numbers.
I meant that I noticed in our consent agenda, the first time in a long time was a staff and student travel request. And I'm very happy to see those things beginning to reach.
Yeah, we, we have started to see some of those again. We had some requests to travel nationally and I've kind of said, we're not going to travel nationally, but if we're within the within a state and obviously if we're going to play football games or volleyball games or try cross-country meets in Seattle, we're absolutely going to have our staff. Particularly, you see a lot of CTE staff travel and student travel to events and, and probably music travel as well, I would think. But somewhat hesitant to have people flying to the East Coast and be there for, and I heard about that, but we just need the cases to start to slow down. We need, and, and Superintendent Reichdahl showed some of the charts over the last 18 months and they do show the numbers starting to come down statewide and getting to the levels that we would want them to be. Hopefully, if that can happen, we can get back to the potentially a time where at least we're, the, the most recent change in the mask mandate is that over 500 outside, if there's over 500. So we will have to impose a mask mandate at our football games this weekend and any other events that we have outside that are over 500. So we're just hopeful to see the cases decline and the hospitalizations decline so that we can kind of move forward. An interesting time that we live in.
Okay. Next up, we have a department update and Erin Lucic is going to be giving us a teaching and learning equity update. Erin, in the audience?
Yep, they're back there. They're determining how they're doing.
They look slightly confused.
Clarissa's here.
It's actually Clarissa.
Sorry, I was under the
The look on Erin's face.
The room, I was under the, there was a rumor that you weren't here and I can't see past the podium.
I think they were doing rock, paper, scissors.
Well, we're happy to have you here, Clarissa.
We are gearing up for two presentations coming up for you all on the next board meeting. The first one being our continuity of operations plan. This was something that all school districts had to have prepared. That shows that we will maintain and if necessary, implement a continuity of operations plan in the event of disaster. Also, COVID is a disaster, right? So we are prepping for that. That has to be submitted to the state, but we'll also be presenting that to you on next time. In addition, for increased transparency and clarity of purpose, as well as at the request of the school board, we will be presenting on culturally responsive practices in Evergreen Public Schools and we are really excited to do that for you. So our time, it has been gearing up to prepare for you on that as well as opening and being in schools, meeting with principals. And then we are excited to be able to present for you on next week on those two topics.
Questions for Clarissa?
Looking forward to it.
Okay.
What she said.
Thank you, Clarissa. Appreciate the update. Okay. Next up is citizen comments. This is a time where citizens may address the board about issues other than personnel or legal in nature. The time is three minutes and if, we're asking if you hear someone who's making the same point that you're making, if you could, we don't need to hear it more than once, if it's the same. So people on our list here, the first one would be Karen Asbury.
Good evening. I'm Karen Asbury and I'm here as a parent of a high school student. I've had some concerns about transparency around COVID. I've had some concerns about transparency around COVID. Lack of communication. We received one email in the middle of May and then nothing until August 19. And meanwhile, we were like going, are they really gonna reopen schools? Really, like the lack of hearing anything was upsetting to, to us, to our child. And then when we got an email, it was just about attendance and how important it is that your student is there every day. There was no mention of unless they're sick or unless somebody in your family's been exposed to COVID. So that was, yeah, not good. Liked the, the sit down with the soup. That was really, that was funny and good and everything. And then I hope that you'll recommend vaccines. Yeah, I know that you don't necessarily want to mandate, but gosh, you know, the LA schools are. So at least to recommend, I think would be huge. Relying on masks, it's the only difference. You know, there's adults in the room that aren't even correctly wearing their masks. I've seen a lot of masks drooping and it just makes me so nervous because I'm sending my precious child to school every day, relying on kids to wear their masks correctly. Where that's especially problematic, I think, is eating, obviously. I'm encouraging my daughter to go outside to eat, which is what Portland Public Schools is recommending. And I think that's, that's a really good move. That's going to work until it gets cold. And then I hope that we're remote. I really, I, I hope so because I think that's the only safe way to do it. And then buses. A friend of mine told me she saw two buses going into Ridgefield last Friday with the bus drivers wearing masks and no students wearing masks. I did report that to transportation. That's an outbreak waiting to happen. Very concerning. Overcrowding classes, especially electives classes, three feet distance minimum, doing the minimum just doesn't seem good enough to me. There's a French class I know about with second year, third year and fourth year French students, and the fourth year French students are all crowded around one table. So I'm not sure they're even social distancing. Unreported cases. I've also heard about Cascade Middle School, having a student come to school on the first day of school, 15 minutes in, parent calls and says, oh yeah, the kid tested positive and they picked up the student, but I'm not seeing Cascade on the list anywhere. So I, it's obviously not you guys' fault. So, sorry. I've just, I've had so many things just building up. Thank you so much.
Bill, was that an activities bus or was that?
Okay. I didn't personally see it. A friend of mine told me that she saw two buses pulling into Ridgefield in the evening.
That they were Evergreen Public Schools?
Yes, Evergreen Public Schools buses. Last Friday evening, Transportation said yes, there was a football game out there. So.
They played football against Ridgefield last Friday. So we would have had.
Okay, yeah. And I appreciate dialogue because it's just weird to stand up here. I've done this once before, to just stand up here and talk at you. And I, I wish that we could have more of a conversation.
Thanks, Karen. And we do appreciate when you come. Next up, we have Samantha Golden. Samantha here. Oh, there you are.
All right. I've never done this before. I'm kind of nervous. My name's Samantha Golden. I have a student at YU's Middle School and I have a student at River View Elementary. Please do not go back remote or I won't have any hair left. My, I was, maybe I didn't know how school board meetings, this whole thing was going to work, but I more had questions rather than a statement, but now I'm seeing that it's statements. But up until 2019, there were personal exemptions given for school vaccines. All school vaccines, no one had to be vaccinated to go to school. I know that they removed that for the MMR specifically in 2019. So my whole thing was if the COVID vaccine is mandated, would there be personal exemptions allowed for that vaccine, seeing as you could send your kid to school with tetanus, diphtheria, pertussis, anything that is on the vaccine list for a personal exemption besides MMR? And my other questions were if the COVID vaccine is mandated for kids over 12 is what I understand is the guidelines right now for FDA approval, how are you going to differentiate between those students who are vaccinated, unvaccinated, religious exemption, whatever the case may be? And if a child doesn't want to get vaccinated or their parents don't want them to get vaccinated for whatever reason, are those children not going to be allowed back at school? I know with the MMR thing, when that outbreak happened, it was if there was an outbreak of MMR, the kids would have to stay at home for four weeks. If they were not vaccinated, are you going to follow similar rules like that? And I know some of this is up to the governor and you guys just follow what he says, but I was just wondering overall about vaccines. And then something completely unrelated, I saw in the news, a teacher in Endercombe High School, which I'm sure probably some of you have seen. He had an Antifa flag in his classroom. He had a Chairman Mao flag in his classroom. He used a lot of stamps on assignments. He gave extra credit for kids if they went to protest. Now, this was a high school, so like not my elementary school student, but with parents not allowed on school property anymore, at least at YU's and River View, we're told to stay in our cars. We're not allowed to get out. A student in his classroom had indicated that they were very uncomfortable and the response was, well, if you're uncomfortable by my Antifa flag, you must be a fascist. So that's your problem, which really resonated with me as a parent. If my student feels uncomfortable about anything in a classroom and goes to a teacher and says, I'm scared, I'm uncomfortable, I don't like this, tell me more, and they're called a name in return, I just don't think that's very good. So with parents not being allowed back into the classrooms, how are we making sure that this kind of thing doesn't happen in the Evergreens District? And that's all.
Thank you.
Yeah. Questions about mandating vaccines for students or mandating vaccines for staff?
Yes. So students. I just have, I worked in a medical clinic for a long time. And so I know that there was personal exemptions that existed. You would go to your doctor. It wasn't even a medical exemption. It was just a personal one. So I was just wondering about students.
Hey, okay. Mike, are you aware of any mandates pending for student vaccines?
I know that in the Zoom today with Superintendent Reichdahl, I think somebody asked the question because of California. They, they, in California, they're now mandating it. He indicated that he didn't see any, he didn't have any belief that that was going to happen in the state of Washington, that they would mandate COVID vaccinations for students. Now, that's today.
Yeah.
So it's just unknown?
It's unknown, but just because California did it, I don't, it, it, it didn't, you didn't get the feeling from him that, well, California did it, so Oregon's gonna do. A lot of times these three states are doing the same thing. He, he did not give that feeling that that would be the case.
Okay.
Is there somebody that can make contact with Samantha?
Yeah, I mean, when we're done, we'll come on, talk with you.
Oh, okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Then I wanted to make sure, the high school you were talking about, was that one of ours or a different?
No, the high school I was talking about was a high school called Endercombe High School in California.
In California, okay.
And it was, I don't know if you saw it, but it was in the news. It was, it was a big thing.
Just an example of what?
Just an example, yes, of. Yeah. Now, I can't get into a classroom and my student says that they're uncomfortable about something, but I can't see it. What am I, what am I supposed to do and what are the steps? Because somewhere along that line, that breakdown happened and that person had these very polarizing things up in his classroom.
Well, and that's the kind of thing we would always want if, if that happens and if it goes against what we believe and what our culture is here. But if it were to happen, you'd have every right to notify the principal and.
Well, and that's what, I guess that's my question is if I don't know what's happening and my student doesn't say anything to me, how, are you guys, are there people that go into the classrooms to make sure that everything's copacetic, especially now that parents aren't allowed to go into the classrooms? Because before you could just walk in.
Yes, but yes, we do.
Okay. Yeah. Good. Thank you.
Principals and administrators and, you know, there's a lot of people that, yeah, so it's okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Samantha. Next up is Gary Wilson.
Thank you, Evergreen School Board and Superintendent Merlino. My comments this month will echo my comments from last month. My name's Gary Wilson. I have a fifth grade daughter here in Evergreen and two older daughters have graduated here. Last month was my first visit to your meeting and what got me off the bench, you ask? Facebook comments of one of your teachers. Concerning the unvaccinated, she said, let them die. And if we're lucky, we can cut out 30% of the population. That vote's the wrong way. I've been vaccinated, so I'm not standing here as one who she wished death upon. I'm standing here as every parent in the school district should be, to stand against hate speech. Her comments were hate speech, were they not? There can be no question on that. Last month, I reminded each of you that last year, each of you signed Resolution 6365 that stated, now therefore, be it resolved by the Evergreen School District, number 114, that we condemn racism, racial violence, white supremacy, hate speech and bigotry in all forms inside and outside of our schools. So I ask each of you here tonight, who signed this resolution, what are you going to do with your teacher who publicly stated multiple hate speech comments? Second point, a black father said this at a school board meeting recently and I quote, putting critical race theory into our classrooms is not combating racism, it's fanning the flames of what little embers are left, end quote. People of all races are standing up across this country against this racist doctrine and theory. Last month, I also mentioned, check the facts, as a new comprehensive sex ed curriculum used in 31 school districts in California. This curriculum would meet the mandate for teaching comprehensive sex ed, but in a more widely supported style than the planned parenthood versions currently offered. In talking with some of you after the meeting, I mentioned that there is a committee that reviews these curriculums. I failed to get more information on that and I want to know who I can contact to share that information with. If you can share that with me tonight, I'd appreciate it. And lastly, online learning, I mentioned last month, my daughter was in that last year. She excelled at it. Another parent called via the internet last month and spoke and said that their son excelled at it as well. I pointed out that offering this is an option to those who want it would be a win-win situation. Less children in person to contract the virus, which the Delta virus is attacking children much more, worse than last year's virus. And teachers who don't want to get vaccinated could teach via online. There's no downside. After last month's meeting, Superintendent Merlino mentioned that the governor is basically telling the schools not to do online learning this year. And I asked if we can push back and challenge that edict as well as other school boards across the state. And my question is, has there been any discussion on this subject since last month? Thank you.
Do you have some?
Yep.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, Gary. Appreciate your comments. Next up is Henry Harbert. Okay, Henry. Thanks for being here. And Daryl Johns.
Hello. My name's. In middle and high school, high school, one graduates next year. My issue, some of these people spoke, of course, first off is on these mandates. I tend to say that Ensign Lee has put out a vaccine mandate. Well, I haven't seen anything with regards to that, so I don't know what, even what's in this mandate. I'm sure you're aware that there have been a number of lawsuits already filed or in the process of being filed against this vaccine mandate. I'm against it myself. I'm against it because I don't like somebody controlling me and telling me what I can do with my kids, grandkids or whatever. Sure that this is a serious virus, no question about it. Nobody denies that. But this controlling thing that, that's prevailing, not just here, throughout the country. And I know several Washington workers have already sued Ensign Lee against this vaccine mandate. Again, that's our choice. That's our choice, either do it or don't do it. And it's like you're cutting people out because you want them to do what you say that you want them to do. That's not right. That's not American, period. Excuse me. So like I say, I'm, I'm against the vaccine myself. One is, it's experimental, you know, and we, a lot of effects coming out, even for kids, and kids even more so than adults. That, that concerns me, you know. I don't want two years down the road that my kid all of a sudden can't walk or hearts, you know, having heart attacks and all of those stuff. There's not enough evidence. You're not going to learn whether the vaccine is good or bad in two or three months, period. That's, that's, that's well known. It takes years to learn. And I don't like them either, but I can adjust to it. My kids, they have adjusted, my grandkids, I should say, have adjusted to me. So I can't really speak on that, although they don't work. And there's been studies already publicly made says they don't work. They don't do what you think to do. Viruses don't stand there in front of you and say, I'm gonna wait until you pull your mask down. It's going to go around you, up, down, side, whatever, like anything. So to, to say that this is the all and all cure is, is wrong, is a lie, plain and simple. But this, this thing with the mandates is what really angers me, trying to push this. I just saw on the news today about the LA Teachers Union, which is a powerful union from what I'm told. It seems like they are because apparently they are directing the CDC to come out with stricter restrictions for kids on these mandates. Now, I don't, they don't, they shouldn't have that kind of power, period. CDC really shouldn't have that kind of power because all they do is recommend things, but because we have these, excuse my French, council necks sitting in Washington, not just Washington, Washington, DC. And I know about that city because I grew up there. They're, they're crooked and corrupt. I mean, that's the bottom line. I know, like I said, I grew up there and I seen it firsthand of some of the crooked stuff that goes on in that city. This, this is just ridiculous. It's, it's, it's gone beyond ridiculous now. When it started out, there was a, definitely a reason for doing all this stuff. But now, after almost, now going on two years, this is really becoming ridiculous. Kids, the kids are the ones who are really suffering. You know, I can get along, hey, I'm 71 years old, I ain't gotta worry about it. But the kids are the ones really suffering behind this and they don't understand what the heck's going on. And sometimes we can't even explain to them what's going on.
Can't tell. There we go. Yeah. My address, Lori has my address. EEA president. Printers. I, I am just as surprised as you to be here. You know I don't waste my time at this mic. And the fact that I'm even talking to you about this is just the level of ridiculousness that this is at. The reality, the reality is, is that we had an understanding and we, this has been at every bargain. We've talked about personal printers and the effect that they have on classrooms. And there was a unilateral decision made to take away half of the printers, to get to a two to one ratio. Now, the clear feedback was do not do that. We know that there are some hub printers, especially in the new buildings, and we agreed to those. We said, yeah, that makes sense. If you have a hub, you can have a hub printer. But where you don't have a hub printer, it doesn't make sense to have the traipse across the classroom or traipse across the school to get to your, to your printer. Now, this seems like a pretty small thing. Now, this seems like a pretty small thing. And I regret the fact that I'm here talking to you. We work these kind of things out in Labor Management. But I've already been rebuked several times and had to go through a formal process to bring this up, that this is not the time to take away a resource from our students. Well, you may say, "What's the big deal?" It's like you have to go next door, you have to go across the room, you have to go into other people's classrooms. A desktop printer close to the teacher means flexibility. If you really want to support students and the accelerated learning that we just heard about, you're going to want the teacher to have the tools that they need to teach. The teachers came to me and said that this is a resource that was taken away from them. Skipping down. It's not okay to interrupt classes to go get copies. That's not really anything that a teacher needs, that a class needs, that the student needs. Printers are the on-the-fly way for us to actually figure out what it is that the kid needs in the moment. It allows our subs to correct lesson plans that don't fit. They can print out different things during the day. Our special education students need new materials every day, depending on where they are on their IEP goals. Well, there's a lot of other things on my list. But here's the thing, I'm not asking you to add any printers. I'm not asking you to buy any printers. I'm saying, "Give back the printers you stole from us. Give them back to our teachers and then we'll have more than enough printers during the pandemic and then we can talk again about good sensible uses of the resources." We can talk about what actually works. But during this time, why would you want to take away a resource from students? And taking away a resource from teachers is taking away from students. Why make teachers teach with one hand tied behind their back? This doesn't make any sense to me and I think that students and teachers can't wait. Thank you.
All for citizen comments. Now it's time for board comments. These are comments by the board, informative things that we like to chat about with each other. Do I have Julie?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. First, I wanted to say that Victoria and I started the strategic plan sessions. It's a sizable group of staff, community members, some students. I actually got to work with a student the last one. It's every other Thursday. And I've been really impressed so far with the work that's gone into it and the brainstorming. And so I'm excited to see some of that work come out later as we bring it forth to the community. So the other couple of things that I just wanted to update everybody on is the WASDA. The region meeting will be October 27th. I believe that's the date.
October. We also have a large school caucus coming up, don't we?
That is coming up too, but it's going to be a hybrid event right now at this moment. It is scheduled for COSO, but depending on how many people decide to sign up in person, it could all go remote. We'll have to wait and kind of see as we get closer to that date. And then annual conference, there is now the online option for annual conference. So I think we're all signed up to go in person at this time.
Yeah.
That's all I wanted to update. Oh, one other thing. As Mike mentioned earlier, we did get to go visit some schools on the first day. It was great. And oh, and thank you Lori, if you got us our tickets for activities because I want to go out and see some of the kids participate.
Anyone else? Rachel?
Yeah. Just basically what Julie said, I was glad to get our tickets to events. On the first day of school, I was, I had the pleasure of visiting elementary, middle, and high school. And just the excitement of the staff, just seeing all of them, you know, just really excited to be there. Everybody is outside welcoming kids. And all the kids on the campuses seem to be happy and glad to be back. And, you know, we're a couple of weeks in now. They may not all be as smiley as they were on that first day. I know mine are a little tired after not having full day school for a while. But yeah, I'm glad to see everybody kind of getting their ground under them and acclimating to the new school year.
Great.
I was at Emerald and Frontier. Got to see how things were going. And between then and now, I actually had a parent pull me aside and say, "You should do something about the pickup lines at Emerald." And when I went to look, it was very efficient and well-run. Good days and bad days, I might have been there on a good day. Patient with Darcy Mitchellson. They're getting a signaled crosswalk at the school, thanks to her efforts. And I appreciate the work that they were doing for that. Also was able to use district resources, the public resources of videos. Matt Solberg's QR code scavenger hunt, remember that from the beginning of the pandemic? The district's video describing Remote Learning 2.0, and that spun up at this time last year. And the Northside Music Productions online technology-rich choir performance. If you remember that, I shared that with the honor students taking a class called, we have a seminar on technology and the study of technology in the context of social things. I gave a lecture to those students about education and technology in terms of what we had to do in the pandemic and showed them things like how we flip the buses to bring food and materials to kids. And just a nice conversation with some bright students there that were, the conversation was amplified by the work that the communications department did and the teachers did to maintain connection during the emergencies. So I appreciate that the resources were there for that. I want to express appreciation from Rafael Perez's family for the card and expressions of sympathy that were sent. Naming in the affinity groups and member. They are grateful for the attention and they're receiving condolences and deep wraparound supports from Emerald School Teachers and Harmony School Teachers. The district people are surrounding the family. It's been a real help.
Good. That's good. I wanted to second Julie's comment about our strategic planning committee. I mean stellar people. I love the parents that are on that committee. They've been so willing to share and, you know, participate. It's a really collaborative group and I'm excited about being on that. I was out at the ribbon cutting for Legacy and Worth Academy and Transitions Academy and happened to have my mom with me. And I tell you what, she's like a walking ad right now. She can't remember anything else, but she seems to remember that day and how cool that school, the schools are and the whole campus of it all. And she just was quite impressed. She says, "School is not the same as it used to be." And it was, that was kind of fun. On the first day of school, I was out at Harmony where they know me there. I mean, my kids were there when the school first opened. They're around forever. And they put me in charge of a bus with the kids and all of that. And usually they just have me, you know, I'm just there greeting people and talking. But no, they put me to work and it was so much fun. The only disappointment I have is I only had one kindergartner on the bus. I really love those school guys. But it was fun to see everybody so jazzed up, excited. And, you know, sometimes the fifth graders, you know, at the elementary schools are kind of like, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, I've been there, done that." They breathe and purkey. So it was fun and the teachers were really so happy to have their kids back in the classroom. It was nice to see.
Were you getting the kids on or off the bus?
I was helping them get off. Ganded me a thing and said, "Here, you're in charge of us number," you know, whatever. The Panda Bus. It was a Panda Bus. And it was just so funny because I was like, "Okay, what do I do?" You know, there's a whole system and I didn't want to be like the one person who wrecked the system. So it was, it was fun. I love the first day of school. It was just so exciting.
Do those with animals and numbers.
Yeah.
Because that helps both types of brains find the bus.
Yeah, it was fun. And whenever you give little ones stickers, that's always a big deal. So I felt like I was a little bit of a rock star with those stickers. It was super duper fun.
One of the kindergarten teachers put me in charge of helping one of the kindergartners get her breakfast. And I was like, and then I was like, she was like, "Oh yeah, take her to the breakfast line, get her breakfast." And I'm like, "Bring her back here." Like, you know, I'm like, I'm like, "Okay, this might be the most difficult task I have all day." So kudos to all of the teachers that are giving those kids their breakfast on time, lunch, wind up.
On back to school night, we went through the process of, you know, how my first grader is going to get out of the car and walk to the back of the building and right where, you know, the line where he's supposed to line up on the first day of school. So let him out, let him go. Then I had to go back with Aaron to take photos and I got yelled at when he got home from school because I was not supposed to be in the back of the school because parents were not allowed back there. So I got in a lot of trouble by my first grader. Told them it would never happen again.
Well, I really appreciate that we've had, I mean, in difficult times, we've had a lot of public support and parental support getting back. People have been really awesome about sharing their thoughts, but doing it in a really respectful and what I would consider constructive way. And that's been, that's been really appreciated a lot, I know, by the staff.
Very consistent in the boardroom and with the people who contacted me. I think we've had some overtures from folks who felt angrier before. And there was one of that apology that actually came in. It was really gracious of her.
So, yes. So that's, that's good because we need, we need that in our, just in general.
Marion reopening is really emblematic of what's possible. The way people were excited about the building and that location. Really.
Well, thank, thank you for your comments. Does anybody, anybody else? Okay. Next, we have future agenda items. Is there anything on the already packed agenda list that we might need to think about or add to our conversations?
I was just going to say, maybe hear more about this printer issue because I lost some of the emails and was just kind of curious.
Maybe Mike can get us an update on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll have agenda items proposed in the governance policy section.
Okay.
If you've seen that document.
So now we will go into recess where we'll sign documents. And then we will reconvene for a board workshop where we will discuss a parks update, governance policies, Board of Distinction. And a legislative update. Then we will go into an executive session for about 45 minutes to discuss the performance of a public employee. And I call us into recess. Thank you for joining us tonight. Okay, we're going to reconvene the meeting and go to our out of order. Go to our board workshop? I know. I'm just looking to see who do we have doing the parks update today?
Gail and Sue.
Okay. There it is.
I had and start just with a little brief overview. So I represent the school district on the Parks Advisory Commission. And we have so many collaborative projects where we share school grounds and parks adjacent. And we co-use. And one of the most recent examples is right here where we just signed an agreement where we have reciprocal use of the parking lots. And then we're taking full advantage of the park, the employees and the students here. But the parks, this is the City of Vancouver Parks and Rec Department is and in doing that, they have to identify green space within the city boundaries. And there are subdivisions or districts within the cities overall, the parks. And they try and balance out the accessibility to green space in all three of those districts. It also has to do with how they spend, collect and spend parking impact fees as well. So no surprise as we've found when we're looking for vacant land for schools, parks also is running into that problem as they try to identify vacant land in fast-growing areas of the city where they need to provide green space. So one of the ways that they can help offset and count some of that space is to look at some of our school facilities and school grounds and count a portion of that as accessible for citizens in off-school times. So Sue and I have been working with the Parks and Rec Planning Group and just talking about what that might look like and what that means for us as a school district in counting for our grounds. And then what it means if we allow the parks to co-share that green space. So that's kind of the overall piece. We're working toward closure by the end of this calendar year as far as wrapping up the plan. And then they, of course, submit it to the city council and then up through the state.
The information that they've asked for and that I've shared with them is just how many acres we have. We actually track and separate field acres versus fronts because it's a different mower. The fields are a 14-foot bat wing mower and the fronts are more detailed. And they're trying to figure out, should they count elementary? Should they count middle school, high school? Because of all the athletics. So we've shared with them the WIAA schedule for secondary schools and how often they're used. And the other information that we've been really protective about is our building rentals policy around who controls the rental of the fields. Because that was my biggest concern is that, "Oh no, it's a park and you can't, you no longer control it." So, and we've been working with Vancouver Public Schools. Nicole is kind of newer in her role over there. So we've been kind of tagged even behind the scenes so that we're providing the same information and the same kind of stuff to her. So it's just a lot of kind of information back and forth. I think overall, I looked, there are several other cities that do that throughout the state and it's not uncommon. So I think it's fine. We work so collaboratively with parks that I don't see any issue with it at all. And it made sense with how they try to spread the park impact fees around. If they can only spend it in a certain district that there's really nothing to buy there, it would, it would help them in the long run. So just, we just wanted to keep you guys in the loop of what was going on. We're kind of doing this back and forth with parks and I didn't want it to come to you and have you guys go, "What?"
Or see you, yes, tune into city council and see them talking about how they are using some of our land within their comp plan. And again, we've been very specific about what the acreage is, when they use to the public outside of school hours and some of those other rules and regulations that we have that are very similar actually for park cases as well.
So we receive a copy of the report?
It's in their comp plan, yeah. Yeah, we can ask them for that. I still haven't seen it yet. We've just been giving them information.
They're finishing up the draft.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll get a copy of it.
We have some arrangements with the city, places like Marion and I think Corkwood and River Creek, where some of the land that was originally purchased as school property and it's in use as walking paths or Parks and Rec. And I think there are some inter locales without maintenance. Is that part of the conversation or?
No. It, a lot of those agreements are expired in 2013. And that's, that was my leverage. As I told Monica, I won't give her the information until we get those upgraded. We've been trying to get them updated for a long time, but that'll, that'll happen.
And there are a number. There's Ellsworth, Marion, White East, Chahela.
Pressline has a park next to it, but we kind of share use, but we don't have an agreement with it, yeah.
It was, well, there was a question about where Marion could be cited because there was park.
And that was actually part of And that was actually part of the Ellsworth purchase. When we bought Ellsworth, somehow that big, long, skinny parcel, we still own it. I think that one's good till 2030.
The one next to Marion?
Mm-hmm.
Was part of the Ellsworth?
It was part of Ellsworth, yeah. Somehow the two agreements are tied together, which I never really understood. Yeah, Y East has a park. We, in fact, they've been trying to sell us that parcel north of Y East, but it just doesn't, it just didn't make sense with the way the building laid out. And everyone in the apartment complex parks there and uses it. So I just hope that they don't build apartments on that piece. And then, you know, we bought the Burton Natural Area where the Evergreen Fields are going in right now too. And then we just, they just put the signs up at Image for the dinosaur park that overflow parking. I think you guys approved that a couple months, a couple weeks ago, maybe a couple months ago.
Did they name that one yet, do you know?
It's going to the.
Isn't it the dinosaur park?
Yeah.
That's really popular.
That's how we all know it.
It was supposed to be named, it was supposed to be given a Japanese name.
It is, it's Nikkei. Nikkei. N-I-K-K-E-I, I believe. And Todd Hughes-Rare was part of that.
I was going to say Todd is part of that.
And then Holly Williams is the board chair and so facilitated that naming. The thing with the dinosaur park, I'll just give you that one and then we'll, because you've got a lot more. That's because of the playground equipment, but in 20 years when they replace the playground equipment with something other than dinosaur, people will go, why is that called the dinosaur park? So, and, and they really do want to honor.
Tenet farming history, yeah. Truck, yeah.
My kids have been watching that park go up all of last year and very excited when it got done.
Parks update will get you the comp plan draft.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you so much, guys. Now we have governance policy.
On the screen, because the language and editing work, I condensed it into a document that you can pull up out of Board Docs, left of the link. There we are. And Rachel and I talked yesterday, was it just yesterday?
Yeah.
About kind of wording choices and what to propose together. And this is what we came up with. I'm going to propose to you that we do a couple of things. Of course, all of this is to honor and use the Equity Policy Committee's work to place those ideas into the results policies and the governance culture and so forth. And what we agreed might work best is to start with our GC1 policy and modify the Declaration of Beliefs to include some of those. Policy proposal. And also to draft a results policy, R3 Equity, as a standalone results policy, moving one of the lines from citizenship into the equity policy with some of their other language and then renumbering everything down so that it goes R4, R5, R6. The dates that I have up on the screen there are what I thought was probably the fastest way we could get to adopting these. I'm not precisely performing or proposing exactly specifically these dates, but to get to second reading and adoption by the 12th of October, we would need to have our first reading at the next meeting. That may be, I know that I have an invitation to talk to the Citizen Committee meeting from Clarissa and that's the next day, so they can have a look at this between first and second reading. We'd also have this policy proposal out to Paul for legal review, make sure that the wording stays aligned with statute and case law. So yeah, amend our Declaration of Beliefs, draft a new equity policy and then an operational expectation policy called Equity that isn't really in a, in a place where we could begin a first reading the very next meeting, but there's some wording ideas there and I think it needs another workshop. Posing with Rachel for the Statement of Beliefs. So this is an amendment to GC1. Make this track changes stuff out of the way so that it's clearer because I highlighted the changes.
So are, so is the recommendation that we do all, like all three of these or are we picking one of these?
We're doing all three of them. That takes content from inside that proposed district policy and places it into the board coherent governance policies and places, like we put our commitments into governance culture, we put our student focus into results and we put our superintendent in.
So all three of these things is part of the?
Is part of the proposal, yes.
They're not separate?
Really? There are three separate parts of the.
There are three separate parts of the same work to bring an equity policy into, into the district policies, yeah.
It's populating our, some of our already existing governance policies with equity language that we want to have. Am I saying this right? And then we've got the one equity.
An amendment to GC1, which is a board commitments, is like our board commitments, are three. And just choosing numbers, that's not actually part of the work. And then a new OE, something X right now.
All of the highlighted represents changes or new language to the existing GC1.
Right. Yes. So the first one to talk about is that as we were thinking about it and as I was thinking about personalized learning and talking with Rachel, is that we change all students, which has kind of become a trigger for some people, to each student and still honor all students but have that individualized personalized learning focus in the Declaration of Beliefs. So wherever all students were, I replaced that with each student. And some of these are like grammar checker things, like on the basis of is clearer if you say must be made based on, that's kind of minor. But the language that came from the citizen proposal are the big chunks in yellow there that we believe that each student given on waiver and guidance and a learning environment free from inequity will develop the skills needed to face moral and ethical life challenges. That's an insertion of free from inequity and a rephrasing, a little bit changed enough that I highlighted the whole sentence. And then the two at the bottom, which draws significantly from their contribution, we believe that educators must supply access to the opportunities, resources and supports each student needs to be successful, aware that their diverse experiences play vital roles in how they learn and grow. They must personalize teaching and learning and be responsive to barriers that arise from the list, poverty, homelessness, race, ethnicity, culture, religion, ability, spoken language, sexual orientation, gender identity or national origin. The list looks a little bit different. There's ability instead of disability. And that actually came from some work that I was doing with the CAB, the Community Action Advisory Board, where we talked about positive language instead of negative language to describe the class of person or the characteristic of person that we wanted to call out. Ability instead of disability is one of those examples. Citizens and elected leaders, we commit to recognizing the interconnectedness of individuals, cultures, communities and our environment. That's a call out to result policies of citizenship. We work to set expectations and policies that commit evergreen public schools to increasing achievement for each student, narrowing the gap between the highest and lowest performing students without lowering expectations or introducing new inequities. And that phrase comes from the feedback that we got from people at our last two meetings when they were worried that equity had a chance of meaning lowering expectations for people with a disadvantage, right? That's actually the way Rafael put it when he was talking on the 10th of August. That we can insert this and kind of express that community value that way. So that's the proposal for GC1 that we could bring forward for a first reading in two weeks. That's this piece or you want me to take us through the rest of it?
Let's just first, just keep it in chunks that are easy to digest. Some thoughts? Do appreciate the work that you and Rachel put into that, that we needed to be one of all of our governance work. I know that's not as easy. Thoughts, Julie?
I like the wording.
I agree. Like it.
Rachel probably likes it.
Yeah. Yeah, I really liked that last paragraph.
I do too.
I think that's worded really well.
You know what I was happy about? And this is just a selfishness thing on my part, but I love that you guys left in there, no child is expendable. Because that's kind of been a credo of ours for a long time that should never change. So I was happy to see that in there.
Yeah, it was really important to me to keep the spirit of Declaration of Beliefs that's had such a longstanding establishment here. It's part of what makes it a special place, the whole district, right?
From the peanut gallery out there, everybody who's on their computers. Yeah, Phil?
Are you really?
Yes.
Haven't even heard that asked for in the community action groups.
I've heard it before.
No, I just saw a thing on it.
It is, I know that they're referencing houseless more instead of homelessness.
Well, yeah, come use the mic.
Oh, that's it.
Okay. Groups, I've heard to, to reference that it has more to do with the facility, not necessarily the experience. So that's, that's where I've heard it, but. That's really thoughtful.
We could certainly look into it.
It's worth a look.
Yeah.
Would you, do you have, if you have resources or things that you could send my direction and Rachel's direction?
I think you can Google it.
Yeah.
I can Google it, but.
We can Google it, yeah.
Because it's unhoused, houseless.
Yeah, less happy with the words unhoused and houselessness is a neo- logism sounds.
Might be, that might be a good question for the committee, the.
Yes.
Citizen Committee to ask them how they feel about it.
What else? Is that Kristy out there? I think she's on this committee. So yeah, we could talk about that after, when we meet that week.
Person I was going to call.
Actually, the language, you may have already tried to address this, but when I heard the part about barriers that arise from race, ethnicity, culture, like I don't think maybe other people's responses are the barriers, but I wouldn't say that, you know, a person's race or ethnicity brings barriers. I mean, it almost made me think about like deficit thinking, that may not even be exactly right either. So here's where I'm really coming from. Over the summer, I taught the Gear Up Avid class and like the whole message of that class was your second language, your background, your ethnicity is your strength. There are not barriers that arise from it. You're bringing something extra to the learning experience and that's your strength. So I don't know what to do because I know what you're trying to get at with that language.
It's maybe response.
So that was what crossed my mind.
Barriers that arise from, and you're talking about the externally imposed or are you talking about the externally expressed characteristics? Ethnicity, culture, religion?
You must first have to show and be responsive. And a barrier is.
Or just put barriers that arise and take out the rest of it.
Really wanted the list to be in there.
Wanted what part of it, what, all of that?
Well, the list comes from the citizen work. Say, did Clarissa say something? But that's not, it's not what we're trying to do, but the clearer the language, the better. Because I'm, if I think about this in terms of like neurodivergent differences, we have this name, we have these names like that end in disorder, right? As though the names dyslexia or attention deficit are part of the deficit mindset. Is that a good reflection of what you're?
But you have to bear, to, instead of barriers, you. Needs that may arise.
What did you say?
I said to needs that may arise.
To needs.
You've got it over here on the side.
Right. I'm tracking all the changes.
Two needs, the quantity that may arise.
Needs that. When characteristics. And when, okay, when, and I'm just putting this in brackets to talk about it, so when characteristics create something, that's like create inequity. Letters down right now to see if anything makes sense.
That's an area that we might want to just, you know, just know that that's a.
That'll be enough for me to Google jargons as we think about this, but ready for a first reading in two weeks. So if there's input, it will happen before this Citizen Committee meeting and our first reading. But even then, the language can be changed in a second reading if we get better ideas. Taking a note then to examine that section and.
Ryan out there?
Yes.
Nothing strikes you as a? Okay, Darren, how about you? Ever too late until we put the bounds, put the boat on it.
Late in the day. Brains have all shut off.
Yeah, from a communication standpoint.
Barriers. My perception is that the barriers that arise arise because of the speed with which we have our interactions, right? It's. Are below intention, but he can sit. Thomas, making me thoughtful, too. Violating some kind of tradition or something. We'll noodle that around for. Get some input. Door, phone, whatever you want to call it, email address open. If you have some ideas, please send them to me.
All right, shall we move on to the next link?
The second proposal is to establish a, well, second proposal comes in two parts. One is to remove one of the lines from citizenship because it appears in the proposal. So that's just kind of a unit, and you'll see where it is. We're taking out. Demonstrate cultural awareness from citizenship and inserting demonstrate cultural awareness with a modification or two into equity. This is the proposal for equity results policy. Now, governance culture, we adopted, and it becomes like the ethos of the board, right? Equity, a results policy has an interpretation, indicators, and reporting cycle to it. So please be thinking along the lines of, you know, how can we talk to the public things in a quantitative and a qualitative way? Here's the proposal. It is to say equity, students will recognize value and celebrate cultural, ethnic, and other diversities. That's a preamble sentence, and so it doesn't contain the whole list. Students will be respectful and compassionate toward others of any race, ethnicity, or other difference. Discuss controversial issues with civility and respect. That was, Rachel, that was an idea that I came into my mind as I was finalizing this. So I stuck it in there. Number three, demonstrate cultural awareness and competency in their interactions with others who are different. Five, principles of equality and equity in their roles as students and student leaders. And when writing this, I was thinking about Ilani Baldwin's story, not being turned away from a club because she was a brown female. Five, have equitable access to educational resources. Number six, experience a supportive and barrier-free learning environment. Seven, contribute perspectives stemming from their own racial, cultural, ethnic, and family identities. You know, the potential erasure here is of sexual orientation, gender expression. So there might be some modifications to that or some more general way to put it or even just to make the. So. Bearing in mind that this is a reportable policy. Rachel had significant inputs to.
I think it'd be good to hear what the committee, their feedback is, since it kind of stemmed from them. So I think that. This will then will also generate an OE that's interpreted and has monitoring attached to it, correct?
Yeah, that's the third thing.
That you'll bring forward.
That's even more preliminary than this. But, yeah. Operational expectation would call this equity policy out in your interpretation and indicators.
Yep.
Hey, I'm going to ask the hard question. It just hit me with all this conversation about CRT and all that. Where do we, where do we, or should we have language that talks about that? We teach history, or we teach the real history. But in no way does that demean any particular group. I think that a lot of what I'm hearing on the CRT is people are concerned because they think white people are going to now be, you know, ostracized or treated bad because they committed certain things back in history. And the bottom line is, it's history, it's history. We can't, you know, put lipstick on it. If it happened, it happened. And that we, as an institution, would not. Not say that because the ancestors did this, you are, that means you're this now. I think there's that worry, and I might be just totally off-base and worrying about it more than I should. But we don't use our history to be the hammer to punish others or use it to bully or to, you know, whatever it is for any group. Because that could look different at different, you know, different times, depending on what's being discussed.
It was the use of that kind of idea to divide and reduce the circumstances of others. Lines, because we had to say this uncommon.
We.
Right along those lines, right?
Yeah, and the letters and different things. So I don't want to. It's really hard because sometimes it's like, I don't want to validate. Trying to be really careful here. I don't want to validate, though, people's opinions that are going to, that are essentially perpetuating what's already been a problem. And so I'm walked, I'm kind of like, how does this fit in? Because I don't think this should be made just to make people comfortable either. I don't think our, it's not, I don't think we are obligated to put things in there that will make any particular group go. I'm really, I'm struggling because I'm trying to be careful with my words right now. Because I would really like to call it out for what it is.
I wonder. Marty.
Marty, what do you got?
I just want to put this in the simply.
I don't know. I mean, I.
We have a standing policy about the teaching controversy that I've seen, she saw this in COVID school, if you will, because my son was in his world history class, and then he'd come out of those Zoom meetings, talk about how his high school history teacher always didn't seem to have an opinion. He just kept asking, you know, more clarifying questions and listening to students, and they ended up having a disputation arena without the teacher taking sides. And that frustrated him because he really wanted the teacher to take his side, right? But it's already part of the praxis of our teachers to kind of watch for that when they're teaching history, is my sense of it. The best ones make the curriculum, and then they have the students thinking critically about what is their learning. Now, I don't know in every detail whether our history curriculum satisfactory in terms of creating equity and talking about things like.
Well, that's going to, that's definitely got to be part of our getting deeper and deeper is looking at our curriculum. I mean, and being sure that it's really.
And I do have a line about curriculum.
And not being afraid of it either.
We do have a line about curriculum in the proposed operational expectation.
Okay, maybe that's where it goes.
Maybe that's where it goes. But is there anything missing? Do y'all think these words?
You were saying, any subject our students study. Or is this what my passion looks like?
Thanks, Brian.
Incidentally, Brian, it was a union history teacher. Giving you a little credit there. Actually, really encouraging to hear the words here. In large part come from that citizen work and the ideas that they were able to evoke for us. Be used that directly in any classroom is.
I think that I like the words in this, too, because if we, if we just read it from the perspective of this is what we want for our students, not necessarily like what we want from the curriculum and specific history classes, but just that what we want for every, what we want from every student, like, when they leave our system, or how they treat each other, or how our staff treats each student, this is what we want. And. We said that we want our results policies to be easy to read and straightforward, and I think this does it. Curriculum discussion is probably a deeper or probably belongs, you know, in the OE or. It's going to look different for every grade level and every class, depending on what it is.
This was Rachel's, one of Rachel's specific contributions. Of these differences.
And I think that's good, because I think that then that, that one right there on seven, it allows for every student the ability to share and feel comfortable talking about how things affect them from their perspective. And then we learn from each other, too, because we, it's not always this, ever, the same story. We hear everybody's story.
From my, from my kids' experience, these are the kinds of, if you, any classroom, if you can create that environment, they remember it for years and years.
Number seven is really the beauty of public schools because we have the exposure to learn from the diverse community from within our own classrooms.
Your comments from out there.
Room three.
Sorry. Like it.
So, to look back, proposal for scheduling the work, it would be to have a first reading at our next meeting. As the presentations, the course and the others are going to make about culturally responsive teaching, and I think that dovetails nicely with what you're going to talk about. That, is it saying 9/21? Are we meeting on the 21st or the 29th?
Twenty.
Twenty-nine, sorry about that. So meet with them, but after our first reading, also send the words of both of these to Paul playing or. And see if he wants to suggest some. End the rounds, he and I. He says this is pretty exciting, but that would bring us to a place where we're adopting this on the 12th of October as an official policy. And then these two dates are certainly worth, are just the fastest we could possibly go to adopt an interpretation and indicators, and if that's. Come on the work calendar would be. October for an interpretation and indicators workshop and then adoption. Final piece here is a very rough draft of an equity operational expectation. Just for review, the difference between a results policy and an operational expectation policy is to focus on what the superintendent and the people working for the superintendent may or may not do. Ramble reads, superintendent shall maintain a climate and culture respectful of all people who work and learn in the district, recognizing the interconnectedness of individuals, cultures, communities, and environments. Again, a call out to citizenship results. The superintendent will provide students access to the opportunities, resources, and support they need to be successful, no matter their race or ethnicity, culture, ability, gender identity or expression, sexual orientation, religion, national origin, native language, housing status. Apparently, I thought about that. Or level of affluence. So I'm removing homelessness and poverty from this sentence. But other than that, it is taken from the DEI Citizen Committee. That's their word. Those are their words modified by some things I learned about. Access to services through the CAT work.
That's interesting, because this one talks about access to opportunities, where the other wording was the barriers. It's like, it's like the same wording, but just this one's more positive and the other one has more of a negative. So maybe you take some of that. First part.
Talking about the.
Yeah, when we're talking about the, yeah, when we're talking about the barriers.
Oh.
And then in this one, you're talking about opportunities. So it's kind, it just, it's almost the same way it reads, but just a negative word and a positive word.
Down here. Okay.
But then you do have the, maybe that's where you rewrote it, I don't know. I'm not sure, I, wordsmithing is not my thing.
Yet you were just very succinct with the wordsmith there.
I, I know, I'm surprised I even brought it up, because it's really not my thing.
But you're right, is that later on in, later on in the day, when I wrote this piece, I was thinking about that and did not think to call back to that. But, and it's, I saw a couple of thumbs go up, so it's possible that we have our answer, and we just need to do a copy of it. Okay, create learning environments where, also from the DEI Committee, teachers, staff, and administrators are consciously working to counter and eliminate the impacts of racism, discrimination, bias, and unconscious bias in their interactions with students and their decisions, which directly impact students. Superintendent will remove wherever possible and permitted by law barriers that create differences in student outcome predictable by race, ethnicity, or other marginalized identity. That is a call out to the WASDA statement on every. That is a call out to the WASDA statement on every, as in, outcome predictable by, is the way they focused on that. Superintendent will permit robust conversations around controversies among and between staff, members, and students, and develop curriculum containing materials that reflect the diversities and needs of district students. Then, the superintendent will not tolerate the marginalization of any student on the basis of their membership in a protected class or grouping identified by the board and the superintendent as a marginalized group. This positions the authority for this policy here. Laws with respect to bikes, department, you know, see, you know, see articles that proceed from that, but I've long thought that the federal designations of race and ethnicity are far too broad and externally imposed characteristic, and ethnicity and culture as an externally expressed characteristic that comes from positive things. Because I think if we saw data that separated it out a little more broadly, there would be some insights that came from it. Person who calls themselves Hispanic, the same, there are at least 16 cultures and probably more than that that you can name who live here and come from groups, just not the same as Uruguay or Argentina, it's not the same as Mexico, it's just not. Name one overgeneralized group.
Do we have to say, do we, I'm asking, do we need to, from a legal standpoint, have to put in their ownership in a protected class? Could you not say the superintendent will not tolerate the marginalization of any student?
Sure? If we do that?
Marginalize for what, for any reason?
I agree.
And so I'm just, but I want to make sure that by not being more specific, it also Young man?
You should get too specific.
There are interpretation risks by getting too specific?
Or if we just take out the identified by board and the superintendent as a marginalized group? So if we marginalize any student on the basis of their membership in a protected class or grouping?
So does that then say that we're going to tolerate marginalization of students that aren't in a protected class?
That's why I added the seventh clause, is that I thought that the board would want to be free to identify groupings that aren't declared as protected classes in federal or state law.
But then that puts it on us to make sure that we are identifying and staying on top of it and making note of it somewhere, but then we're saying, if you're not on this list, then you're not marginalized.
I'm just talking about, in general, like, sometimes you have kids that just are going to the beat of a different drum and maybe you're seen as dirty or whatever, and might get picked on and kind of marginalized within our system, or maybe it's that introvert that doesn't talk a lot and, you know, kind of gets treated crappy.
Singing my song.
Because they don't, you know, don't or can't defend themselves. I don't know, I'm just thinking, there's a lot of reasons that people can be mean to other people. I want to, I just don't want to say, oh, I can pick on you because you're the skinny kid that, you know.
Sure would have been nice to have a policy like this when I was 13.
I'm asking, that by saying we just won't tolerate this kind of behavior.
Christine? Maybe Paul would have a suggestion. I keep thinking in my head about including but not limited to stuff.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
But then how deep are we getting into just, you know, into the bullying where, you know, it's not just, kind of like the overlapment of some of it? Because we don't tolerate that either, so, I mean, I guess, like, you know, making it into one.
Take away from the importance of definite protected class groups at all.
Right.
But I also don't want there to be any doubt in anybody's mind that you're not pulling
People, because of their membership in a protected class, that's.
Well, doesn't three pretty much state what we're finding? I mean, we.
Three expresses it positively, right? Go on.
I mean, we say, we say all of that up above, and then the last part is just about what the superintendent will, will or will not do.
Yeah.
Well, we already, because we set it up above, right, in one, right, opportunities, and then we talked about it, and we talked in three about removing the barriers, or, and then the last sentence is really just about what the superintendent will do.
Yeah.
Will not do. This is what superintendent's doing, and now the superintendent's not doing it, so do we even?
Did that come from something with WASDA?
No, it comes from the pattern in coherent governance, is that an operational expectation can include, yeah, it can include affirmative instructions from the board to the system about what it will do, and then it can prohibit things that we absolutely don't want them to do.
So, do all of them have a will do and then a won't do?
No, they don't.
Well, can that, we just take out what, we already said what we want the superintendent to do, so why do we have to have a will not do?
My guess is Paul would probably weigh in probably on that, too, about what that
might expose us to. I'm sure he would, I don't, I'm not necessarily saying should be eliminated, but I do believe he would probably have a comment on that.
There are externalities that the school district can't control, and that was, that was the thought I had when I was writing that clause in there, it's just like, okay, there might not be a barrier that we can remove because there's a law in the way preventing us from extending a gift of public funds, or some of the other administrative things that can interfere with us, you know, reach out to a foundation to supply the balance. That's, that's why the language is like that in this draft, is just to think about Barriers, and maybe it creates an excuse that we don't want to create, but we also want to write an operational expectation policy that is actionable and contains qualitative and quantitative data for the public to see. Yeah. We don't want to ask the impossible of our people. Operation. So, that's, that's a loose thought. Oh, yeah. My sense of this was that if we, if we tried to workshop this after first readings, like, you know, had another discussion on the 28th, then the fastest that we could go would be to have a first reading 12th of October, second reading adoption on 26th, and then be thinking in December and January about interpretation.
Yeah, because what we've got to be careful of is we have, we're going to have a pretty packed agenda, and there could be a lot of public testimony depending on how many people show up, so if we load too much in there, well, maybe take care of the first two, but the third one, we just smoosh it out a week or so, even.
The meeting will be long, I want to talk about levy at the, in the workshop as a public conference, I kind of agree.
And 26.
Plus, that's when we're leaving, we'll be leaving that. Isn't that the week we could need to go there to the conference?
I think it's November.
November, okay, good.
So, we could do a second reading. If I push that out one meeting, that's what happens, and actually, I was thinking that the interpretation indicators and other words.
It gives them more time to.
Yeah, because any interpretation and indicators, yeah, you push it out, because that would be.
Into January or longer if it needs to be, it's, like I said, I didn't put these dates in to say, this is what I want.
Yes.
This is the fastest we could possibly.
Start it.
Yeah. You guys have a lot on your plate.
We do have a lot, but we'll figure it out.
We have a concern, as I said. Concern that the deficit mindset may exist in this language here, and a possible solution to that perception in the operational expectations language proposal, just move that up to here and see how it sounds.
Yep.
And GC1 to first reading at our next meeting. And then, even, yeah, combined action to modify citizenship and renumber the policies, and then insert R3 with this language as a results policy first reading. The day after that, it will come before the Citizens Committee as the board has taken action on this, and we can, we can take feedback from them, and of course, the second reading, we can always modify the board and get better ideas, or hearing what they say about this. And then, the operational expectation policy would be deferred until. Giving us all time. You're with the lawyers and the different staff to say. We are, yeah.
I like it.
Good work, you guys.
Jay.
It's nice to see this stuff coming together, for sure.
Appreciate Rachel's help, too.
Thanks for working on this one. Okay, next up, Board of Distinction. You're the one that requested.
Did I take it off?
You requested it be on the agenda.
Right.
So I thought you had something to say about it.
There was a board self-assessment that went out.
Yep.
And what I discovered, is that this is due soon.
Are we going to do it?
That's, that's really kind of a question, it's like every year that we've done it, we've achieved Board of Distinction. Sorry with the finishing of the schools and some of those, and if they align with, I think we actually ought to try to go for it. Let me see, when it's due.
In four days.
Four days, yeah.
Oh, no, holy cow, that's not going to happen. The self-assessment or the application?
The application is due.
Oh, okay.
Three thousand characters, three hundred five hundred words on one of the standard benchmarks that's in the cycle, and opportunity gap essay, version of our professional development. On four days from now.
I can tell you I have no bandwidth to do that in four days.
That's my problem as well, so.
I know, I almost feel like we should not do it this year, we already know, or in all of that, I don't need a thing telling me. I'd rather do it when we really feel like we can do it in a much more cohesive way and, but we need to keep track of somehow is, when does it first hit that we, what the information is so that we know what we're writing about? I don't even remember seeing it for some reason, because usually I see it.
Yeah.
So I maybe just missed it with all the stuff going on, but, I don't know, it's up to you guys.
I say we pass.
That's Rita, whoever else, that's a pass.
You got your numbers.
There we go, we can move on, we don't need to worry about it.
Give quorum.
Okay, do we have any legislative updates of influence?
The only thing I was going to mention was just that Melissa will come to the second meeting in October. Hear from you all, any issues that you want to raise, or anything that you want us to focus on, or her to focus.
We'll check the dates of General Assembly.
29th and 30th. 29th and 30th of October.
So she'll be here before the general assembly and before we have a chance to prioritize what was passed there.
Well, she could help us.
She could help us with prioritization.
For which ones we're going to advocate for, yeah.
Actually, uh, what I learned today, I was on a luncheon, learn about the general assembly today, uh, just listening in, uh, is that a director in. There's a spreadsheet with all the position proposals, and, uh, organized it so that her board could ask each member to, um, just kind of prioritize, like this is a priority for us and so forth, stuck it on a Google Doc, uh, on their district system, and what I heard from Marissa, yeah, Marissa Rathbone about that, she consulted with Abigail, the lawyer at WASDA, and said if we were to do that, keep it exposed publicly, and, uh, put it out there as a read-only thing the public could see that. I'll be working on our little column in the document without it triggering and kind of opening it up, as long as that's all we're doing and we're not talking about it with each other, until we meet, the vision, it's still a risk, and I think we ought to run it past our own attorney, but there is a way, and now somebody's organized it in such a way that we can actually look down and, and before Julie and I go to the assembly. And that's all.
Sounds good. Are going into executive session, and we'll be in there to discuss the performance of a public employee, and it should be about 45 minutes or less. And then we will come out in adjournment. Thank you, everybody.